Number seven, the meeting of the Auburn School Committee, and welcome to all our special guests and parents this evening. We're going to begin the meeting the way we begin every meeting, so I'm going to invite everyone to stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Here we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government of the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
All right, now the next thing I always do is I ask people to introduce themselves around this big circle, okay? So I always start, all of our guests here, I always start down here to my right, so we're going to go that way, and it's going to go right around, and you're going to learn our names, okay? All right, we'll start down here on the right, please.
Dan Poison, Ward five.
Brian Bownat, Ward four.
Pam Hart, Ward two.
Karen Matthew, Ward three.
Connie Brown, Superintendent.
Mayor Jason Lebec.
Pat Gaudier, at large.
Pam Albert, at large.
Julian Dumey, Student Representative.
Abigail Faucher, Student Representative.
Gabriel Desperdelle, Student Representative.
Mark Conrad, Business Manager.
Sue Doris, Assistant Superintendent.
Okay, that's all of us who are around this shoehorned, so now we have to do this much business for two seconds, and then it's you guys, okay? So give us two seconds, all right? All right, everyone, let's start with, I need a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda, including the minutes from the eleven two twenty-two meeting, as well as the eleven sixteen twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. First, Brian, Pam, can I second? Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to use chair prerogative to move tonight's presentation up, so that's you guys. We would like to give a big warm welcome to Mrs. Brooks, is she there somewhere? Oh, she's there, hi, Mrs. Brooks. To Mrs. Brooks and the Washburn and Walton Elementary Chorus Holiday Melody. We hear you have some things to sing for us tonight, is that true?
Yeah.
All right, so I think you need to face Mrs. Brooks right there, and we'll turn our listening ears on for you guys.
Hey, ho, nobody home, no meat, no drinks, no money, have I done? Yes, I will be merry. Hey, ho, nobody home, no meat, no drinks, no money, have I done? Yes, I will be merry. Hey, ho, nobody home, no meat, no drinks, no money, have I done? Yes, I will be merry. Hey, ho, nobody home, no meat, no drinks, no money, have I done? Yes, I will be merry. Hey, ho, nobody home. 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 Hey!
Okay, remember to start at the beginning.
You better watch out, you better not cry, you better not pout, I'm telling you why. Santa Claus is coming to town. He's taking you on a list, he's checking it twice, he's gonna find out who's naughty or nice. Santa Claus is coming to town. He sees you when you're sleeping, he knows when you're awake. He knows if you've been bad or good, so be good for goodness sake. Oh, you better watch out, you better not cry, you better not pout, I'm telling you why. Santa Claus is coming to town. He sees you when you're sleeping, he knows when you're awake. He knows if you've been bad or good, so be good for goodness sake. Oh, you better watch out, you better not cry, you better not pout, I'm telling you why. Santa Claus is coming to town.
Put your papers down.
You don't need them.
Better listen and watch, 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 watch.
Do you want to rock at the North Pole? Yes, we want to rock at the North Pole. Do you want to rock at the North Pole? Yes, we want to rock at the North Pole. Do you want to rock?
Yeah!
Do you want to rock?
Yeah!
Do you want to rock and roll? Do you want to rock at the North Pole? Yes, we want to rock at the North Pole. Do you want to rock at the North Pole? Yes, we want to rock at the North Pole. Do you want to rock?
Yeah!
Do you want to rock?
Yeah!
Do you want to rock and roll? North Pole, rock and roll. Rock and roll. Rock and roll. North Pole, 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 rock and roll. Do you want to rock and roll? Do you want to rock at the North Pole? Yes, we want to rock at the North Pole. Do you want to rock at the North Pole? Yes, we want to rock at the North Pole. Do you want to rock?
Yeah!
Do you want to rock?
Yeah!
Do you want to rock and roll? Do you want to rock?
Yeah!
Do you want to rock?
Yeah!
Do you want to rock and roll? Do you want to rock?
Yeah!
Do you want to rock?
Yeah!
Do you want to rock and roll? Yeah!
How many did we have left?
One more.
A wish, a wish for peace. Our final number, our final number is called a wish for peace. Okay, eyes, where are your eyes?
You.
Okay.
I wish for you. I wish for me. I wish for all the world to live in harmony. When I look into the sky, and I can see the stars above, I wish for peace. I wish for love. I wish for you. I wish for me. I wish for me. I wish for me. I wish for all the world to live in harmony. When I look into the sky, and I can see the stars above, I wish for peace. I wish for love. I wish for hope. I wish for joy. I wish for all these things for every girl and boy. That wherever in the world they are, they see the stars above, and wish for peace. And wish for love. When I look into the sky, and I can see the stars above, I wish for peace. I wish for love.
First row, can you make your way way out? Right out into the hallway, and then your parents can find you up there. So go ahead, follow. Go ahead, Ava. Thank you. Hey, Mrs. Brooks, thank you, before you head out, hey, little friends, thank you so much for coming tonight. Thank you, families, for bringing your kiddos for us to be here, to be able to hear them. We wish you a wonderful holiday season. Merry Christmas and happy holidays. Thank you again, families, we appreciate it. It was wonderful! It was cool!
It was just loud! No, my mom told me to grab one.
Yeah, I would always warn you guys. I'm letting you walk right in. I'm back live now, yeah. For just, for those of you watching, we're just pausing for a moment to allow folks to file out after that performance. Hi. Thank you. Probably, there are a couple at conferences right now. And we can't close those doors because it's a public meeting. I think those who are coming are coming in. All right, we're going to continue on with the meeting, but because it's a public meeting, we cannot close the doors, we have lots of folks congregated out there, so we may just need to speak up a little louder into your mic, everyone. All right, at this time, I'm going to open up public participation to anyone who would like to address the school committee at this time, the mic is open and live. Anyone like to come address the school committee? All right, seeing none, I'll move on. So, school committee student rep report, Gabe, I believe you're on this evening.
So, though you can't see it outside, the holidays are near us, it is getting colder slightly. No snow sadly, but that doesn't stop the schools from celebrating the holiday season, so I'm here to share all the holiday events that will be happening around the Auburn School District. So Sherwood Heights Music Kids in grades K through three participated in an American sing-along on November thirtieth. This was their first performance event since 2019 and 2020, so pre-pandemic. This evening, Sherwood Heights students in grade four through six in chorus will get the opportunity to perform in their own American sing-along. And there was a shout-out from Mrs. Klein to Lisa Mayer, Sherwood Heights music teacher, for her planning and preparation in all her music events. For East Auburn Community School, they're getting a holiday spirit and partnering with local businesses and agencies to provide holiday assistance to some of East Auburn's families. Some of these local businesses include the United Methodist Church, the Auburn Fire Department, and All About You Salon. They are not new with All About You Salon, if you remember, I shared this last year as well, they did a couple great things for them. In addition to that, on December ninth, East Auburn is sponsoring a Holiday Help Hat Day, when staff and students can choose to donate a dollar or more to wear a hat for the day. All proceeds will help to purchase special winter items to distribute. On December ninth, also, students will be making crafts and cards to share with our local veterans. Fairview is having a lot of things happening, they have their twelve days of vacation. I think my sister goes to Fairview, and today's the eighth, so she had a crazy hair day. She did. Tomorrow's Flannel Day, and then next week consists of Beach Day, Silly Sock Day, and they have kind of Team Colors, and then Sunglasses Day, Fancy Day, Tiger Day. It's a really great twelve days of vacation they had. For Walton School, they recently had their annual Turkey Bingo, where over 200 participants gathered for a free and fun-filled night at, evening as a school community. Winners of the games receive board games to promote family game nights. Thanks to Hannaford's and Panera, they also gave away 11 turkeys and over 80 baked goods as door prizes, so everyone won something. Walton School is connected with several local organizations that are supporting many of their families with holiday needs. Gifts, gift cards, and food baskets will be distributed to as many families as they can. Mr. DeGivis gives a big shout-out to DaVinci's Eatery for their surprise luncheon for their Walton staff. On Wednesday, November thirtieth, Walton staff was treated to a yummy lunch, completed with chicken parm, dirty peas, salad, and of course, garlic nuts. Walton staff was very thankful for their generosity. On Washburn, on Friday, December ninth, Washburn will be hosting a holiday movie night for their students and parents. I don't know what the movie night is, but I am interested. And on December twenty-second, students will be singing Christmas carols, thanks to their music teacher, Mrs. Brooks. They will provide their parents with a Zoom link to be able to watch and listen to their students. Edward Little High School, every year, Mrs. Ressian hosts a gift shop in her room and puts free gifts such as kitchenware, toys, or clothing for as many ELHS students as possible, so they can take it home with them for those who can't afford it. This year, the Student Leadership Council has been tasked with helping Mrs. Ressian. And with our committee of seven or so, I want to say we collected at least $600 worth of material and cash and physical item donations, such as kitchenware, clothing, and toys. So I'm very happy with that. And the music department, the ELHS music department has been busy going around listing Auburn performing at the Franco Center for the Nutcracker and their Holiday Bands concert. I believe the choir performed at the Nutcracker that the Franco host annually. Sadly, I was not able to get any information on Park Ave, Franco Alternative, or AMS, but those are all the holiday specials happening.
Nice, lots going on in the district, wonderful, thank you, Gabe. All right, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Brown.
Thank you very much, Chairperson Matthew. The first item on my report is budget update. The administrators' budgets were due December second, that was last Friday, and they have been turned in. Mr. Conrad is in the process of incorporating the information, putting the budget binders together, and then we will begin our meetings with them in January. The first meeting with the school committee is the first Wednesday in March, so we'll start that process, but that is well underway. The second item on my report is I included in your packet a five-year enrollment history of the Auburn School Department. And it's been a little bit since you've had a longer look. And it's been a little bit since you've had a longer look at other than just the current year's enrollment. One of the things that we are watching pretty carefully is that we have dropped about 300 students between 2019 and 2022. And as we go through the budget process, we'll do more of an analysis about what grades have been impacted, and we are working with the city regarding what areas of the city might reflect that enrollment drop. And that is a good segue into the next item on my report. Mr. Conrad and I met with the architects from Harriman to discuss the board goal, which is to create a master plan for our facilities, to evaluate the capacity, sufficiency, and structural quality. They will make a preliminary presentation to the finance committee tomorrow, and then a complete presentation to the school committee in January. And you will have that information for budget development purposes for 2324. Mr. Conrad, do you want to add anything to those two items?
It will be a very tough study, and it's going to take some time, but it's something we feel is important to get off the ground now, so we'll be hearing a lot about this over the next few months, I think.
Great, thank you very much. The next on my report is an update on transportation. Mr. Dotte, Mr. Holland, if you would come up, please. These folks are overseeing the transportation of the Auburn School Department, and we've had some challenges with our busing. So without further ado, Dennis, help us understand what they have been.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I'm Dennis Dotte, Public Works Director. I have Scott Holland, Deputy Public Works Director, with me. He's going to provide a little detail on some of the work we've been doing around recruiting and getting these bus runs filled. As Superintendent Brown alluded to, we've had a couple of bus runs empty or unseated with drivers for the last few weeks due to some personnel matters we just needed to address over that time. The reality is, what we've been doing is trying to rotate those cancellations around, so the same parents and same students are not impacted over this time. But I'll go ahead and allow Deputy Director Holland just to speak to the efforts that we've been going through, and I think there is light at the end of the tunnel, and we are getting there towards that.
Okay, so we, as Dennis said, there's been a couple buses parked. We've been trying to review that to see if there's any other alternatives, and we did, we have come up with one, so hopefully, starting on Monday, there'll only be one bus parked. We had to switch some drivers around to make this work, but we do believe that we are set to go on Monday with only having one parked. Now, we have four people in training right now, and as I know I mentioned in the last update a few months ago, it takes a long time to go through the CDL training and the passenger and school bus endorsements. Out of those four, one is going for a test on December 20th. That employee had a date of November 14th and didn't pass the road test. I just want to give clarification that on the 14th, she put in a couple days later and didn't get a test date back until December 20th, a month later. So it's the state, you know, having those positions to get those drivers back in there. So that person goes on the 20th. We have one that needed the full credential, CDL, passenger, and school. He has recently got his permit, and will be starting the road and the range training. And as soon as he gets that under his belt, it's so many hours that he has to have, well, he'll be sending in for his license. We have two drivers that have their CDLs. One only needs the school bus endorsement, which he's gone through all of the theory part of that. He's going to be starting his road training once he gets his permit. He has sent in for it, has not received the date back yet. And one other one that needs both a passenger and school, we've got the theory all done, it's just waiting for the test date to come back for the permit. So the one that we sent in with a CDL that needed the full credential, it took him three weeks to get a date back once he sent his application in. So that's where we're having the trouble. We have the people there, you know, we'll be able to fill these buses that we do have parked and have a couple more that will fill some of the slots that are doubled up on runs. So, and we have an interview on Friday, so with a full CDL driver, he just needs the endorsement. So just a little bit behind of what we're facing in trying to get people in here. It's really tough.
Thank you. I commend you for your efforts. Filling any position right now is almost impossible, but the criteria that you need to get behind the steering wheel of a bus is tremendous. And it is not like people in the public have come up to us and said, where are the folks who used to drive all these buses? And I don't think all of the requirements were there 10 years ago, 15 years ago, that are required now of a bus driver. Am I correct? I thought so.
And we're fortunate, we have a trainer in-house, but he's a bus driver, so he's only doing it in between his runs. So it just takes a lot of time to get through all that.
So in this day and age, I would say we were in a very, although we do have to cancel runs, we are in a pretty good position to hopefully look forward and not have to get those daily phone calls. Okay, great. Any questions from the school committee? Yeah?
The one bus that you're going to have parked on Monday, what will that affect? Who will that affect?
See, we've been switching drivers around. I don't have that in front of me, because like I said, we're not trying to keep it the same bus. So we took like five or six drivers and split it up. So I'm not, I would have to look back to see what bus it is. Stuff has been sent out, so.
We've literally, I mean, up until close of business today, working these schedules, trying to make these, you know, as Deputy Director Holland, you know, said, we just discovered a new way of actually covering an extra run. So we've had two uncovered bus runs for the last few weeks. We believe we'll be down to one uncovered bus run, and that's like, again, we can get the details out, we'll have that. We usually will put something out probably by Friday, the latest, announcing that which one will be affected on Monday.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Pat, you need your mic on.
Would there be any point to contacting the state to see if they can do anything with pushing up those dates for these people?
The reality is, I think the demand on the state is there. I think everyone is trying to get those dates, so I don't think it would do much. I think Deputy Director Holland has a great relationship, actually, with some of these folks, and I think actually some of the dates that we've enjoyed is because of that relationship. And so we have, I think they're as good as they're probably going to get at this point.
Yeah?
I just have a question. I don't know if you guys can answer this, or if this is more administration, but out of the students who have been affected, how are they getting to school? And are there any that have been chronically absent as a result of the bus run issue?
So we have been relying on parents, friends, community members to get kids to school, and I don't have chronic absence data tonight to share with you. I can certainly look into that.
Any other questions? All right, thank you both, and again, we applaud you for all your efforts. It's not easy right now, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Last item on my report is staffing vacancies, and at your place is a list of all of the professional positions and some support positions that we have, starting with AMS, which is Auburn Middle School. And if you see a parent's beside a position, it means that we need two of them. So for example, teachers, special education, AMS, we need two positions. I'm interviewing tomorrow, Mr. Wilson, so hopefully that will be a good development. One of the things I wanted to share with the committee is that we do advertise vigorously. We are on school spring and serving schools. Diane Blay, who is the HR specialist, was at a career and job fair earlier in, early in November, I forget where in December. We advertise on Indeed. We do some advertising in local papers, but not a lot because it's expensive, and we found that it doesn't really yield that great of a number of candidates for us. And in terms of papers, say, The Globe, it's thousands to advertise in The Globe, and we don't, we just don't see the yield for that. So we try to stick with the online venues. So that'll give you a sense of where we are with hiring. If you go down to Bus Drivers Support Services, many of those, or spares, or substitutes, and positions that we would like to have, but they are considered fill-ins at this point. And I'd be happy to answer any questions from the school committee.
Any questions for Dr. Brown? Colissa? So please use your mic, thank you.
A few, oh, a few questions. One was earlier about the facility study. I just, I was curious about, I don't remember, did we vote? Like, did we have a choice of Harriman? I'm just curious as to how that choice came up. And then the other question is, in terms of this hiring, these vacancies, I can't, I don't know if it's like higher or lower than usual.
So let me answer the first question, which was the process regarding the selection of Harriman. You may recall back, Mark, what, October, when the committee voted to accept the, what's the name of that project?
The performance contract for the HVAC upgrades.
So the committee did vote to award that to EEI?
There's EEI in partnership with Harriman.
Thank you. And so the next conversation we had with them was to extend that work and to do the facility study that has been adopted by the committee as a board goal.
If I could note, that proposal's going to come forward to the school committee.
That's right.
Can you just say that again? I kind of missed it. I didn't understand totally.
Sure. The proposal will first go to the finance committee, which I think is tomorrow, and then come to the full school committee in January, January 18th, I believe. And then your second question regarding vacancies, I didn't bring last year's or the year before, but I can certainly put that together for you if you're interested in it.
And the question was if the vacancies are higher this year than in years past? Okay. Yeah?
I do have a question about the transportation, the MOU. We, the school is charged with $62,600 in order to have that partnership with the city. And I was just wondering where, what that $62,600 is used for?
That's considered a management contract, and Dennis and Scott are part of the oversight of the transportation, custodial, and maintenance staffs.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Brown?
Sorry, I have one last question, but this could be for later maybe, which is, I was wondering what's happening with the transportation software and how it relates to this?
I have a meeting set up next week to speak with Mr. Dotte and the team with that. They've held off on beginning the implementation process because they didn't have the third position that they needed in the transportation office to begin the implementation. Now they've got that position with an assistant coordinator, and she's had a few weeks to be trained up, so I'm hoping that process will get underway soon, and once I can speak to the team, we can provide you with more information on the timeline.
Okay, great questions. Anyone, any else? Pat?
Just clarification, the $62,500 is for half the year?
That's correct.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Moving on, no school committee chair presence report, city council update, Mr. Mayer?
Yeah, pretty late. I just want to make the school committee and staff and students aware that our Christmas tree lighting will be downtown tomorrow at 6:00 PM. Very exciting, biggest lighting we've had in Auburn history, actually. That's going to coincide with the opening of our brand-new Christmas, our European Christmas Village, which we're getting a lot of great comments on. That opens at 4:00, and it'll be open every weekend until Christmas, from 4:00 to 8:00 Thursday and Friday, and then from 10:00 to 3:00 on Saturday. Love to have some of the kids in the choral groups come and actually perform. So I'd like to, quite frankly, we're so busy putting it up, we never thought about it, but I think we can talk about that offline and see if we can extend that invite. And we're prepping, obviously, for our 1219 joint meeting with the city council and the school board. So that's all the updates we have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayer. All right, committee reports, all the agendas are linked and to the agenda. Were there any questions about any of the subcommittee or standing committee agendas? Have a question, Pam? Use your mic.
Yes, the Lake Street School, are we going to be discussing that later on in the meeting, or should we be discussing that now?
It's in, once it has to come to a motion, and then we'll have a conversation. Okay? Yep. All right, let's moving on. Old Business, can I entertain a motion for a second reading and approval of policy AUB- DKC, expense authorization and reimbursement? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Pam. Questions, comments on that one? All right, all those in favor? Motion passes. Next, second reading and approval of policy AUB-DM, cash in schools' buildings. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Pat, I think I heard you over here, Brian over here. Questions, comments on that one? Seeing none, all those in favor? None opposed, motion passes, thank you. Next is a second reading and approval of policy AUB-DN, school properties disposition. Can I entertain a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Pat. Questions, comments on that one? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes, thank you. Next is a second reading and approval of policy AUB-CB-R, superintendent's school's job description. Can I entertain a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Pam. Questions, comments on that one? Sure, Pat? You have to use your mic, please.
This is for Dr. Doris. I saw something in, something we got in the emails this week about a new updated job description for superintendents. Have we been working with that, or is that something new?
That's this right here. Yep. Or do you mean the job, do you mean the evaluation? You mean the job description? Okay, all right, so that's this one right here. All right, any other questions or comments? We'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Motion passes, thank you. All right, this is New Business. Sorry, give me a second to scroll. All right, can I entertain a motion to accept the RETC transition plan as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, thank you, Pam. I'll open up, anyone public comment on this one, where it's New Business? All right, seeing none, I'll open up to the school committee. Ladies and gentlemen, any questions, comments, debate on this one?
I have some questions. First of all, I wanted to ask, how much has the ASD already spent on the preliminary work of the renovation program?
Altogether, including what we expended to create the application, it's about 40, just over $45,000, and that's money that will have to be absorbed through the operating budget if you choose not to move forward with the renovations. I would note, though, we have a, we actually have a contingency line for $30,000 in the maintenance budget, so two-thirds of that will be covered through that contingency account.
Has the program, the present program been profitable at all, where that can be off, the, this amounting, this money can be offset by that?
We have a surplus from last year, but that would be returned back to the member district, so it's not really set up as a, as a program that would be profitable. I would also note that the costs of the renovations themselves would be borne by the district, not through the program, and that's part of the cost concerns that we had moving forward.
Any other questions?
I have some questions, too. In the $1,065,000, so it says that it includes $65,000 in local costs. Was that already allocated for in our current budget?
No, that would have, let me just talk that through for a minute. So the $1,065,000 was the cost estimate for the total project, and because the revolving loan fund only goes to $1 million, we had to kick in that extra. So that $1 million would have, our portion of that would have been, looking for that number, would have been just under $330,000 over 10 years, and that would have been built in through the annual debt service, and then the $65,000 would have had to have been allocated through our capital improvement plan, through the funds that are already available there, I presume. The other concern, though, is that cost estimate of $1,065,000 was created two years ago when you were creating the application, so it's highly likely the cost estimates would have come in significantly higher than that, and we would have had to have borne the total, total increase over budget, again, presumably through our capital improvement plan. So you would have been utilizing funds from your capital improvement funds that could otherwise be used for other purposes.
And then my other question is, the cost of a new portable at the middle school, how much does a portable cost?
We put in our Esser application 350, correct, Mark?
I think so. That may be a little high, but I think it's in that ballpark. That's gone up significantly, but we're talking about a two-classroom portable with a heat pump for heating and air conditioning and full utilities.
Bathrooms?
Bathrooms, yeah. That cost has gone up significantly, not only because of just the nature of the construction industry right now, but you have new requirements from the DUE, so for example, there'd be a full sprinkler system. So for example, there'd be a full sprinkler system in those, in those portables. So they're really nice facilities. They're full-size classrooms with bathrooms and meet all the safety codes.
So I guess my question is, if Esser funds would cover the cost of a portable, would Esser funds not contribute to the overage, the $450,000 to $600,000 overage for the other improvements that would need to happen at Lake Street?
They might. That's not a question we've asked them. They do seem to, we think they're going to approve the portable. But keep in mind, we have a limited, even though we're well-funded with those funds, it's a limited budget. So those costs would have come from other needs, most likely curriculum, which is what we're using. Is the swing, kind of remaining funds that are available have been placed into curriculum. So there are still competing priorities for those funds.
Pam?
I have a few more questions. Not so much about the money part, but about the students. My concern is that by taking these students out of the program that they're in, I realize there's only 18 students there now. And one of those students is an AMS student that would be put in the portable. My concern is that, are we creating an environment where these kids are alienated from their peers, further leading to feelings of isolation and nonbelonging? That's one of my concerns, especially since we're taking the SOS program and the RETC program to the high school kids. But the AMS student, there's only one kid that's going to be left out. Is there, has there been a discussion about maybe bringing him to the high school as well so that he's consistent with his peers that he's with at the Lake Street School?
So I'd like to invite Laura Shaw and Ben up to the horseshoe to discuss that programming question, Pam. We did look at both the middle school kids and the high school programs. And to get started, Ben, perhaps you could describe what has happened with the middle school behavior program for '22, '23? And then Laura, maybe you could help with what will the new program look like and how it will expand services for students, both in terms of social, access to social workers, access to specialized teachers, and access to peers, which they don't currently have?
Does this work? Okay, there we go. Hold this pause. So due to the condition of learning college at the middle school, those students, we had six students in a behavior program outside. They are now in the building. We currently have three students we're looking for further programming for because they have higher needs. And, you know, it just wasn't sustainable the way it was running beginning of the year. So those students had to come in to be part of our school. And the building is being used for the purposes currently. But I'm not, I'm not worried about being able to add more students to that list when we do have a different program next year with a new learning cottage and the new availability of programming. There are always going to be middle school students who will need that higher level of care.
So the, the idea is to sort of, we dismantled the behavior program that existed because it just wasn't, wasn't ideal, wasn't working well with the space. And so we would be building another program sort of from the ground up that would include a teacher, trained, at least one trained BHP, half to two-thirds time clinician, with the possibility of getting revenue from main care like we currently do at RETC. There is, there is only one middle-level Auburn student at RETC, but we would have more if we weren't so understaffed. Right now, we're incredibly understaffed. So there are, there are two or three that we probably, that probably would be in the existing RETC program, but we just don't have the staff to support them. So Mr. Wilson's doing an amazing job trying to program for them at AMS. So as he said, there would likely be no shortage of a peer group. It is, it is, it's kind of a double-edged sword. They're, they're not with their peers now at all. They're completely away from non-disabled peers, which in some way is good because they have their own sort of established culture in school. But it is nice when you can include kids with their non-disabled peers, even if it's for a small amount of time. And that's not easily done when you're in a separate facility. So it's definitely pros and cons. But one of the pros of having a program at the middle school would be inclusion as much as each student could be successful.
So you're talking, they're saying that you're understaffed now. And we talked about, my question was, does the upcoming budget reflect the additional staff, such as the clinical social worker, the special ed teacher, and the BHP? If we don't have that now, will we have that in the future?
Yeah, hope, yes, hopefully. Everyone that is, well, I should say, most of the staff that are there at RETC will go to either EL or the middle school. You know, of course, who knows what happens between now and the start of the school year, what we may have to hire, but, so.
I think to be specific, there aren't any new positions being added because of this change. The positions are already in the current budget and they carried over to the next budget.
So there aren't any positions being lost either?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, no. That isn't correct. There are positions being lost.
Can you address which ones? Are you, are you at a point where you can say which ones?
I would defer to Dr. Brown.
So one of the positions is a, an educational technician's position? And Mark, the other position is a classroom teacher, correct?
Right. I think as we've had difficulties hiring over a number of years, the program has slowly been downsizing since we can't hire positions. We're also losing the director's position since it will be supervised differently from two different locations. I think we'll be staffing at the level we can staff it at now. Really downsizing it to what we can staff to in some way.
Right. So, yeah, I mean, because we have lost staff throughout the year, we have not been able to take kids. And we've actually had to try and move kids back to Lewiston and back to EL and back to their home districts because we just, we can't safely staff.
So you're understaffed now, but you're taking the same staff to this new program. So I guess I'm confused as to, are we going to continue to be understaffed? And how are you going to help the kids?
Great question. And one of the things that I think we forgot to mention was that we will only be servicing Auburn students. It will no longer be a regional program.
Sorry.
Mark, go ahead.
I have a lot of questions. Another question I have is that, so this is presently a regional educational treatment center that fits, that works with the needs of these children. They need more support than, I assume, the behavioral program. But now we're putting them with the behavioral program. So I guess my question is, why did we have to have the regional, the RETC in the first place if we're able to put them with the behavioral students? Or is the whole program changing?
So the, the whole program is changing. So there, there are varying levels of behavioral needs, let's say. And sometimes they can be managed with just a teacher and some ed tech support. And other times, it rises to the level where they need clinical support. And what that means is they need trained behavioral health professionals and a clinician overseeing that BHP and providing counseling services. So you could theoretically have a program at the middle school that has, I don't know, let's say, eight students. Only four of them have the clinical need for which we could bill and receive revenue. And maybe four don't have quite that high of a need. So it's, it's really on an individual basis. There is sort of a spectrum of need behaviorally.
If I could add to that? So with the new high school, you also have some new opportunities with the new space there. We realized as we were looking at the plans that when they originally designed the high school, they designed it specifically for RETC and SOS in a space in the back corner of the building because that's what it reads on the plans. And they'll actually have their own entrance, which is significant for some students to be able to come directly into the program from where they're being dropped off. There'll only be one exit out into the mainstream of the school. So it'll be easy to supervise students, easier to supervise students coming and going. And you'll have that direct drop-off, which we didn't have as an opportunity at the existing school. And so there's some new opportunities with the new high school there as well.
And there was a section, there, you, I just want to reiterate what you just said, Mark, is that the new school was designed with the RETC program, and I see Scott nodding his head in the back, with the RETC program to be housed at the new EL?
Yes, it's actually a suite. They have offices for social workers. They have small group space. They have some community space. They have a larger classroom space. Rod Botat, the assistant director or district coordinator, I guess, will be actually moving over there and housed there next year. So I think the space was well-planned for the eventual transfer of the program back to the high school.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Jason?
I just have one question. Will this proposal increase the likelihood of a better outcome for Auburn students now and in the future?
So I believe the answer to that is yes. The students are going to be in better physical space, whether they are in a learning cottage at the middle school or in brand-new space at the new high school. What Mark didn't include was the new space includes a kitchen area where they can do some culinary arts things. They'll have access to some of the other programs because they're located in that wing. So yes, I do believe it will have better outcomes for our students.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Clarissa?
I have a couple of questions, or more than a couple. One question, so since you're up here at last, that first. I guess I'm generally in favor of this idea. But I wanted to know, in terms of like legal, like the whole least restrictive environment thing, I thought that's what we're sort of supposed to be aspiring to, which is having people as integrated as possible. So I'm curious as to whether this is more aligned with that or whether the RETC was just an exception to that. That's one question. But then the other one is, I guess I'm cur, I'm curious, I have three in this area, how parents feel about this, parents of the affected students, like if they're generally supportive or not. And I'm guessing since there's not, I mean, I know this is a really tricky thing, but I would be interested in hearing parents' responses. And then, I know this is, the third thing is, even though I'm supportive of it, sort of in the long run, it kind of feels like there's this short-term risk. Because I'm hearing a lot of like, we think, we, which is, you know, we think, we this in terms of what might happen in the short run. And I know that with some of these students, that short-run risk, it's like really falling to the cracks. I feel like, I would feel more comfortable if there was a more clear articulation of like, here's what we're going to do, sort of for like a safety net in between that transition time. Or I just kind of want to know, like, do we know we're going to have these things in place when it rolls around next year or what the timeline is?
I would say yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Speaking for the, speaking, well, middle school and high school, I can fairly confidently say yes. Things will be in place. There will be a cohort of students. And, you know, knock on wood, you know, the staffing that we need to support those students. And, you know, in regards to your question about least restrictive environment, that's a great question. And so sort of the model that a lot of school districts, schools and school districts are using in Maine, and I don't know outside of Maine, but I know in southern Maine and even western Maine, districts are creating their own sort of day treatment-type programs connected to schools. Portland, Saco, Oxford Hills region all have these, these sort of day treatment-type programs. And number one, you know, it is, it is best practice to have, and really legally, we are obligated to have students be with their non-disabled peers as much as possible. But the reality is, there are, you know, the special-purpose private schools like the Spurwinks and Margaret Murphy and those, you know, those, they are folding. They, they're not profitable. They're, some of them are closing, and waiting lists are years long. So, you know, it does, definitely does behoove us to have, you know, some high-quality programs in the district that are at that day treatment level. Oh, I can't, I haven't personally spoken to any parents, whether or not they support this or not. I haven't heard anything pro or con from any parents.
And then I just had one other question about cost-related for, Mark, which was, the way I read the proposal, the cost emphasis is really on sort of fixed costs. But I was wondering if like the operating, because I'm imagining Lake Street is more expensive to sort of maintain and heat and everything than a new cottage in the high school would be. So I'm just, I didn't see that, but I also arrived late and don't have that with me.
So they wouldn't, but they wouldn't be in a cottage at the new high school. They would be in the new high school. Oh, AMS, okay.
You know, I, I think it's so much difficult to compare because you have a regional program with three different stakeholders paying into it. So it's a much larger budget, and we're only paying a proportion. So I think roughly speaking, it breaks even. And I think if you look at that, to some extent, salary increases would push the price up. But then we're saving, from not having those same operating costs pushes it back down. So I, I think we can say in general terms, it's roughly about even to what we're paying now. It will be structured differently because what you'll see is more staff in your personnel budget. But then you're going to save on the tuition line that we're paying into RETC right now. And of course, when I say it breaks even, roughly speaking from an operational standpoint, that doesn't factor in all of those additional costs we talked about a few minutes ago in terms of the cost of the million-dollar debt service and those other capital-related items.
That would need to go into the Lake Street School.
Pardon?
That would need to go into the Lake Street School in order to, in order to maintain the facility.
Right. And so I'm thinking of that in terms of cost avoidance.
And have we, Mark, I'm sorry, I'm jumping in if anyone had a question. The water issue at Lake Street School, have we even begun to think about what the cost of just the repairs of any of that would be?
No. See, we were looking at a couple of additional costs from the architect, though. Are you talking about the water penetration to the building? That was one piece. The other piece was the fact that the site plan would require an additional access road. And so you really can't ask the architect to begin to put costs of that when you're putting a hold on the project and you're really not sure of where that site plan may go. But we know they would be significant to resolve.
Okay. All right. Great. All right. Any other questions? Pat?
This isn't really a question, but when they were putting together the, the building plans to include this space, I think it was originally, and Scott can back me up, for alternative school, several of us went down to the new Sanford High School and looked at the facility, which was just about what we ended up with. Franklin decided to stay there, but I think this is a great idea because the kids, they will be, you know, in their own space, which is what they need for what their issues are. But if they want to go to chorus or an art class or whatever, they're right there on, in the building. And I think it's great. I think it's going to be a good plan for these kids.
Thank you, Pat. Any other questions? Pam?
My concern isn't so much for the high school kids because since we've already planned that system. And correct me if I'm wrong, but this was, this was, these kids were always going to go to the high school once it's built, correct? These, the high school kids were always, the RETC kids, were they always going to end up at the high school in that program that is being built in the new high school?
So it's my understanding that there was always, always a space in the new high school for RETC and SOS, separate classrooms, separate entrance, as Mark described, community, space, kitchen, and so on.
So it's designed to accommodate them should the move happen?
Okay. So the move wasn't necessarily going to happen? Or is this something that we were planning, so we built this for these kids? Is that was, was going to be happening in the fall?
I think the original people, the original designers of the school, I don't believe are here. So that's kind of a question that is, I don't think anyone, I don't know that anyone can answer.
Isn't SOS there now?
SOS is there now, in the old school.
So that's regardless of the future of Lake Street School. SOS was, went into the high school.
Is there now? Yes.
Yes. Mark?
I think, and this may have been a victim. I think, and this may have been a victim of the, all of the changes in personnel taking place at the administrative level, but you were making an application for renovations to Lake Street School at the same time that you were putting the plans together for Edward Little, and I think some of us realized as we were looking at that over time and looking at, on top of the staffing difficulties and all of that, that there was an opportunity that we hadn't been looking at, and we didn't want to continue to put money into Lake Street knowing we had the facility at the high school, because then you're, you know, you're making, you have to sign a commitment with the DOE because you're getting a significant subsidy at taxpayer expense, but a significant subsidy to Auburn to have those renovations take place. So I think it was that sense that we have to make a decision now, since you're, you're moving forward, and you have to move forward with those renovations if you've accepted the money. So we maybe could have planned it better, but that would have been a decision well back when we said we were going to put in the application for the, for the renovation.
So I guess my concern is the middle school, and as far as, I know we, I realize we have one child that's going to be going to the middle school from this program, and is going to be put in with the behavioral program. Now, these are two different programs. One, I'm, I'm assuming, and please correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, but the RETC student will require different help and assistance than the behavioral student, or no? Why, why is the, and I guess why is the RETC person not in the behavioral program now?
Because, well, there is no behavioral program. That was dismantled.
Yeah.
Okay? And there are students right now at AMS that would have long been, gone to RETC but cannot go because they don't have the staff.
At RETC.
Right, because we have, you know, if we have 18 kids, 10 or 11, 11 of them aren't, aren't Auburn. They're tuitioned from Lewiston, RSU-16, so, you know, we, we can't say, okay, suddenly you, you know, you've paid, you can't have your students, they have to plan for those students too. So there are students at the middle level who frankly have, probably need more clinical support than maybe even some kids we have there. It's just they're not there because it's not an option right now.
And by having that cottage, these, these students would have the opportunity, availability of the clinical social worker, the behavioral health professional, and the teacher, the special ed teacher. But now would they be cloistered in that cottage, or like, I guess I'm, in my mind, I'm, I'm seeing like these kids stuck in this cottage, even though it's beautiful, and not associating with the other kids?
So that's been the design of the middle school for a few years now. I think, you know, past administration has put together a program out there for the purpose of, you know, providing that extra layer of support. There's a social worker currently at the middle school that was tied to a program all back. I call the all back, but it's the learning cottage, just, just for lack of space. So the middle school right now doesn't have availability to bring the kids fully inside the building, you know, and to keep everyone safe at the same time. Some of these students have slightly aggressive behaviors that require us to have to clear classrooms, and, you know, it, it'd be better to have that smaller environment. It would be better to have it physically attached, but I think this is going to be the best we can do, and it's, it's going to be a healthy program. You know, there's been talk of moving some of the RETC folk over to the middle school, so the programming could be very similar to what it is now, just in a new facility. I think that's the hope.
Okay. I'm about to call for a vote, ladies and gentlemen, so get your last comments or questions in, please, Pat. Can you use your mic, please, Pat?
Used to be automatic on this. Is there an expectation that some of these students would graduate out of the program, or can you expect the numbers that we see at the middle school now to continue all the way up through at the high school?
Well, evidence of what we're able to do so far is that we've had six students in a self-contained program out in our learning cottage, and when moving them in, we found we only have three or four that really need a higher level of help. So, you know, they're continually graduating into the middle school, and it's been, it's been fun to see their growth when they're in resource rooms, but we do have a couple of students that do need an extra layer of care. But, you know, I think ideally what happens over a period of time is that, you know, the purpose of special education is to work itself out of a job. So these students are learning and growing every day, and it's really hard to tell if these students will graduate by the end of eighth grade and not have to go to a program at the high school, or if they'll need further assistance, but.
It's, it's really fluid. You've got kids moving in that need that, you've got kids who, for whatever reason, have developed, you know, mental health issues and behaviors, but we've, I've seen a ton of kids be stabilized and be able to go to less restrictive settings as well. So it's really fluid in and out.
Okay.
That's good to know. Thank you.
All right. So thank you both very much for all your information. This time, school committee, I'm going to call for a vote. Right now, the motion is to accept the RETC plan as presented. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Seeing any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Thank you for the conversation, everyone. So at this point, we have, we have voted to accept the RETC transition plan as presented therefore. The next motion is to, a motion to vacate the property at ADI Lake Street School, Auburn, Maine, and return it to the city of Auburn effective June 30th, 2023. Do I have a motion, please?
It's removed.
Thank you, Brian. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dan. Questions on that one?
Have we, before, sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Have we ever considered, we've talked about this in DEI, and we've talked about this in the Health and Safety Committee, that we have a 350% growing homeless population in Auburn? And has it ever been discussed that this school could be used as something to help with homelessness?
So I think, so I think at this point, and it's not a sell, it is essentially turning it back over, and what the city of Auburn decides to do with it at that point, they'll have to have conversations within the city, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, but they will have to have conversations with how to best use that facility.
Just to, just to clarify, our current zoning dictates what uses are allowed for any building within or any parcel of land within our city, and currently we do not have an ordinance that allows for any type of homeless shelter anywhere within the city.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor to vacate the property at ADI Lake Street and return it to the city of Auburn, all those in favor? All right, motion passes. Thank you. All right, upcoming meetings, you have December 8th, which is tomorrow, the finance meeting. The 13th will be the policy subcommittee meeting. That is in-person upstairs, fourth floor, is that correct, Dr. Doris? Thank you. December 14th is a meeting that, uh, school committee members, you can cross right off your list. That exec session will not be happening on the 14th. We'll let you know if a new date is needed. Uh, the 19th would be the joint council, the joint meeting between the city council and the school committee, 21st, regular school committee, and then we have some January committee meetings happening. At this point, I'll call for future agenda items. All right, seeing none, a motion to adjourn, please.
It's removed.
Thank you, Brian. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Clarissa. All those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you, 7:08.